Board is back in open session. Welcome, everyone. The board has a couple of small items to go through before we get to what I expect will be the highlight of tonight's meeting, which is the presentation by the Ames students. So, first item is, is there any public comment? If there's no public comment, then does any board member have any proposed changes to the agenda? If not, then we move to the superintendent's report.
And I only have one item, and that's to introduce Mr. Gierman and the Ames students, and be ready to hear from them.
Thank you. Good evening, this is Mary S. Ford of Education Superintendent Ryan Toy. We are very fortunate to have some wonderful visitors here this evening from Ames Elementary School, and they're going to be presenting to you some of their student-driven research projects that are facilitated by Patty Bernanich, who is our Library Media Specialist at Ames, along with our 4th grade team. We have Mrs. Kristen Mimmels is here, Mr. Jeff Wydra, and Mrs. Tina Doovie, who are here to support their students as well. And without further ado, we're excited for the students to start presenting, but we're gonna introduce Mrs. Bernanich, who's gonna give you a little bit of introduction to what the students are gonna be working on, or have been working on, or what they're going to present. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Patty Bernanich, and I'm the Library and Media Specialist at both Ames and Black Park School. An important part of my job is to collaborate with classroom teachers to teach students the research process. And about three years ago, I began to incorporate a type of student-driven research opportunity in 4th and 5th grade. I wanted to give the students more of a choice in what they were researching. I discovered a project called Genius Hour, which essentially guides students through the research process, but also gives them choices in both process, content, and final product. This inspired me to customize a student-driven project that is loosely based on the concept of Genius Hour. The goal in implementing this type of project was to expand on where we could capitalize on the idea of inquiry as an extension of science and social studies. In 4th grade, I collaborated with classroom teachers to partner in this instruction. A project like this ties into where we might go in the future with the research process, knowing that we now have standards that are inquiry-focused in both social studies and science that will be implemented at the elementary level over the next few years. In 4th grade, we completed this project using an online resource called TrueFlix. TrueFlix has many different topics to choose from, everything from tsunamis to black holes. Each topic has a video as well as an online book on the topic. Students brainstormed which of the over 50 topics they would like to research. Next, we embarked on the research process. Students created a guiding research question about their topic. Then they took notes on a graphic organizer using both the video and the online book. Once finished with note-taking, the students created a presentation to share their knowledge with others. For this project, the students worked with partners and created a collaborative Google slideshow. We have a few students here from Ames who would like to share their presentations with you.
Mammals. Why look for xenorhine kids?
Thank you. What makes mammals successful? The quality is mammal with a large fork, babies that are also called brushy.
What is a mammal? A mammal's anatomy doesn't react. It also have to have air a certain type of blood. All mammals are warm-blooded. Animals that are warm-blooded and meat-eating have to have temperature that keeps them not too cold and not too hot. Since dogs can't sweat, they need air to get, they need air to get air for their ball passes.
What makes a mammal, what makes a mammal different from a reptile? Reptiles are different from mammals because reptiles lay in the air. Mammals don't. Most reptiles have, don't have hair, but mammals do. Reptiles have warm-blooded, meaning they, they change their temperature, but mammals are warm-blooded.
What makes a human a mammal? Mammals and humans don't react. Do humans have hair? All mammals have hair, a certain type of blood. Humans are warm-blooded, mammals are not. Many mammals live with their mothers for a long time, and humans live with their parents for about two days. If humans weren't mammals, it wouldn't be born in it.
Fun fact, the only flying mammal is a bat. Mammals are warm-blooded. All mammals drink milk from their mothers. Most baby mammals, most baby mammals need their mother's, mother to survive. Almost all mammals have teeth. Cheetahs are the fastest land mammal.
Conclusion. In conclusion, mammals use all these skills and traits to survive in the wild. Their fur keeps them warm, and once some mammals lose their fur or hair, their blood temperature keeps them warm. Mammals can also eat more than one food. So if a food were to disappear, mammals would still be able to eat. Mammals can easily adapt to other habitats because they are fairly smart. Mammals are very good survivors in the wild from these skills. Camels store a fat tissue that helps them survive in very hot weather.
Titanic Disaster by Savannah Murillo and Cole Caniana. First of all, do you, fir- Why didn't mo-, why did most of the lifeboats leave when they still had room for more people? First of all, do you know a lot about the Titanic? If not, I'll tell you some. People wondered why the crewman did not put all the people that they could put in the lifeboats. It was halfway through when they launched the boat. A lot of people died in the cold waters of the Atlantic Ocean. The Titanic was the most famous ship in 1912. A lot of people didn't know what was happening.
What was the Titanic? It was a big steamship that crashed into an iceberg and sank into the bottom of the Atlantic Ocean. It struck an iceberg that made it break in half. It drowned. Once the ship broke into two, the lights went out and a little over 1,500 people died. There were about 2,200 people onboard. About 700 passengers survived the wreck of the Titanic. The lifeboats could have held 1,178.
How did they try to save people? They tried to save people by putting them in lifeboats one by one. The lifeboats could have hold about 50 people each. They got about half of what is supposed to hold. They should have put more people in the lifeboats. The crew did not know what to do. While they were launching, launching the lifeboats, a band played so the people could stay calm. People who survived would never forget the memory of the Titanic breaking in half, bow first, bow sinking first, then the propellers turned to sink.
When the ship struck an iceberg, the wa-, water filled the ship, and so the crew started launching the lifeboats. It took an hour for the first lifeboat to be launched into the water. They did not have enough lifeboats for everyone onboard, and they had only filled the lifeboats halfway. A lot of people could have been saved, but the crew had no idea what to do. As the band played, the Titanic's bow rose up into the air. A lot of people fell into the icy Atlantic. The water was 26 degrees Fahrenheit.
Interesting facts about the Titanic. The armistice White Star Titanic was a steamship that carried mail across the Atlantic. The closest ship, the Californian, could have responded, but the guy who does the radio went to sleep and turned the radio off. The Titanic sent off its last flares. The car pathia, who's farther away from the Titanic, however, did hear the Titanic's SOS call. The Titanic sisters are the Britannic and the Olympic.
Now you know some, a conclusion. Now you know some facts about the Titanic. If you were on the Titanic, what would you have done? Well, we have to stop this slideshow, besides the citations, read some other facts about the Titanic, and try to make a, a show just like us. Bye.
We found this from TrueFlix, and the stuff from it is over here.
The Digestive System by Alyssa Wine Xavier-Sarano. Alyssa couldn't make it today. In our first page, we include a table of contents, the introduction, what are the processes of the digestive system, intestines, does eating vegetables give you more energy? And conclusion. Introduction. Have you ever wondered what makes your stomach growl, or what makes you go to the bathroom? Well then, you've come to learn about the digestive system. Here is a diagram of the digestive system. What is the process of the digestive system? Once we eat food, it will then process down to, to our stomach, which will then break down our food more and create energy to parts of our body. As the rest of the, of the rest of the food that cannot be made into energy, it will then digest downward to the lower part of the body, which will then digest out of the body. That's what happens, the process of the digestive system. Important intestines. Intestines can help you in many ways. Believe it or not, without some of your intestines, you wouldn't be able to digest food. One of the most important parts of the digestive system are the long intestine and the short intestine. The long intestine can get to about five feet long. As for your short intestine, it can reach a length of about 20 feet. You might be wondering, why is the short intestine longer than the long, why is the short intestine longer than, than the long intestine? Well, then, the long intestine stretches over the short intestine, therefore getting the name long intestine for stretching out so wide. Does eating greens help you gain more energy? Yes, it is true, greens give you more energy. First of all, vegetables do come with lower calories unlike other foods such as pizza. Not only do vegetables help give more energy, they, they help you lose weight. It helps replace the fat in your body and get more energy than other ordinary food. Conclusion. In all the digestive system, it is an interesting subject to learn about. What you've learned about important intestines, how the digestive system functions, and how certain foods help you gain more energy and lose weight. If you want to learn more about the digestive system, do a web search or read a book about, about it, perhaps even watch a video. And this is our webs, this is all our stuff that we got our information from, and where it was published, and what year, and by who.
So that was very, that was very impressive. I mean, all of those three presentations were really great. I mean, did, did you guys, did you choose your own photographs, or how did you, how did you get all those photographs for the, for your presentations? The web? You just selected them by searching for them on the web, basically? They're really well-matched, I think, yeah.
On the slides, slides sometimes it says background, and so you click on that, it says, like, search. So you go to there, and you type in what you want. Or you can do explore and type in what you want, and then it'll give you tiny pictures.
That's great. And did you guys choose your own, and did you choose your own projects to work on it? Did you select them yourselves, or did you? Quite a variety, too. I mean, the digestive system, mammals, and, and the Titanic, I mean, quite a, quite covered the range there. That's great. Well, thanks very much. I mean, that was a really, really good presentation. You guys did a really good job. Yeah, very interesting. So. Next item on the agenda is the, thanks very much, thanks, guys. Next item is the consent agenda. So, on the consent agenda, one of the items, let the, would the board secretary like to read the consent agenda, please?
Yes, I will. Tonight's consent agenda includes a closed session from December 20th, 2017, minutes from the rightful business meeting on December 20th, the personnel report, the payables pre-lists from December 27th, as well as January 17th of this year, a resolution regarding recycling of out-of-date tech equipment, and our review of the closed session minutes.
And in that last point, the motion is to-
Maintain the minutes as closed.
As closed, correct.
At this point, is there, are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like taken off for further discussion?
I'd like item 5 pulled off for further discussion.
Item 5, resolution regarding recycling of equipment, okay. Are there any other items that anyone would like taken off? If not, then at this point, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of item 5, resolution regarding the recycling of equipment?
So moved.
And this, just to re, just to, to be clear, we are, the sixth resolution here is, the sixth item is to keep the closed session minutes closed. So at this point, is then, can we, Margie, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Thanks, Margie. Then we come back to item 5, resolution regarding the recycling of equipment. Rich, you had a question about that, or?
Yeah, I do. I, you know, being as that we have two IT professionals on our board here, I'd like to just see if either one of those professionals has any comments specifically about that, and how the district intends to treat that, that equipment that's defunct or outdated.
So just so people know, in the audience, the, the resolution concerns the recycling equipment. Most of it is old computer equipment, like old laptops and so forth, so that, that's the context of the question.
Yeah, I'm actually glad you pulled it off. I was considering pulling it off myself. I did have a question, though, about it, wondering, I think, what, on the inventory list, it looked like most of the stuff was being, what, I think was listed, what was one was disposal, and the other option was-
Surplus.
Surplus, that's what it was, yeah. So, are we receiving payment for the items that are described as surplus, or how does that arrangement all work out?
Yes, based on, when we put the proposal up, it, the items that we feel have some level of cost recovery, the vendors that submit proposals did their evaluation of the worth of that equipment, based on, you know, we provide them serial numbers, make and model, and then, and such. So, we had three proposals received on that equipment. It is a combination of cost recovery, and then also pickup for scrap items. So in some, some instances, they, they offset each other a bit, and as we have in the past, we put it out typically to about six or seven different surplus recyclers. In this instance, we got back three, and we just went with the highest proposal.
So they came back, we're looking for the items from 1,100, 2,000, and 3,000, and you chose the $3,000 bid?
Correct.
So the items that are listed as disposal are still taken by the vendor and recycled?
Correct.
They simply don't have any estimated residual value?
Exactly, exactly.
So really, those quotes that you received were, their impact is on the surplus items, really? Because those are the ones that still should have some type of use?
Exactly.
Okay.
And, but in, in most instances, their proposal also takes into account the, the actual recycling of the other equipment. You know, if they have scrap, if they have to incur any costs for disposing of that equipment, then it's offset, it's offset a little.
Okay.
I mean, I like the proposal. I like the big thing, and I imagine it's the wiping of the hard drives, taking out all the environmental information, so.
Right.
That was my big thing, I noticed that, so I was happy to see that.
And then we do also, we also make sure that all the proposals have to be a no landfill policy on the equipment.
So when you wipe out that hard drive, that's what protects student identity in the district, and search history, and all that kind of stuff, right?
It wipes any data that could potentially be on those drives.
Okay, and it's non-recoverable at that point?
Yes, they use the Department of Defense, they use a certain protocols for wiping of hard drives.
Okay. Yeah, I just have no experience with this type of contract, so.
It's Department of Defense, normally. I think the way that's disposed of is there's a program that writes essentially garbage data-
Okay.
-a number of times, some kind of writes, formats, writes, formats.
Okay.
And then cleans, cleans it off, so, because you get, you have to overwrite documents, I don't know, I forgot what it was, I think it was seven times before it goes completely removed. And so, I mean, that's, it's just, it's a good policy. I mean, most people don't do that, so. I personally take my hard drive out before I recycle it, so. But yeah.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Does anyone else have any further questions or comments about this item? Thank you.
Thank you.
Then at this point, is there a motion to approve the resolution regarding the recycling of equipment?
So moved.
Second.
Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Margie. Next item is the Riverside Educational Council. Does Riverside Educational Council have any comments? If not, we move on to board member comments. Are there any comments, any board member, about any activities that, because it's early in the year, probably not, you know? If none, then we move on to the committee reports. First committee is education. Sherry, do you have anything to report?
Well, we didn't have a committee meeting last month, so not at this time, but in the next coming months, we'll have lots going on.
Rich, do you have anything to report in the finance committee?
No committee report for finance, but Mr. Holmes says a couple of items I think you want to cover, is that right?
All right, the, later in the, in the presentation, is that the?
Well, it's in the agenda item right under-
The other items will show up, about the, like, the press and dev-
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I think that was rearranged.
Oh, gotcha, because I didn't see that. Okay.
And, last policy committee, Dan, do you have any policy items?
Nothing to report at this time. We will be a flurry of activity, though, in next month.
We next move on to old business. First item of old business is the official school calendar, which we talked about, I think, at our last meeting. So at this point, is there a motion for the board to approve the 2018-2019 official school calendar as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Does anyone have any, anything they'd like to say about the proposed calendar, any discussion on this item?
Only for the covers watching or here, it's very similar to this year's, as far as I can tell, so it'll function very similarly, as far as vacation dates, and start dates, and end dates.
So the break date align with 208, right? Okay.
Their calendar's also in draft form. I don't know when exactly the board has, or will soon be, but we preview shared draft calendars.
Okay. Any other comments, questions about the calendar, this calendar? If not, Margie, please call the roll.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Margie. Next item is the 92 Repton Road demolition. At this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the demolition of 92 Repton as presented?
So moved.
Second.
So we, I know we, the previous board talked about this last spring, and I think the intention at that time, that, that board basically considered two options. One was demolishing the house in the summer, early summer of last year, or the end of the summer of last year, so that the fire department could have an opportunity to, to use the house to practice. I gather that that didn't happen because of something with a historical commission in Springfield said that they couldn't do that for some reason, was not cleared me. So we didn't demolish the house, and at any, at any rate, we didn't demolish the house in August for, for whatever reason. So I think the question now is, do we want to go ahead and demolish the house as soon as possible? Is that the idea, or?
I think there's a question of demolishing it, right, as soon as possible, essentially, or, you know, the other discussion had been to wait until the actual, you know, if there's to be construction next to Ames, you know, if you're waiting-
That was an architect's recommendation that we wait, because it might save money, but, I don't know, it's been sitting a long time. I think it might be time to get it into a state that's-
I don't advocate waiting either. I mean, if we could capture some green space, even if it's in a temporary fashion for that school, I think we need to do it.
Just knock it down, put some sod in, don't worry too much about making landscape fancy at the present time.
Exactly right.
I'd rather take time with the facilities review, make sure it's done right.
Kids are playing on blacktop there.
Aren't we gonna wait for a break, or summer, or?
I would think we'd want to wait till break, not do it during school, because it'd probably be quite noisy.
It'd be.
I think, I think we should pursue proposals for it, because I actually think a building like that comes down in a matter of hours, and so the impact could be minimal.
So you could do it over weekend, or on-
Maybe even do it on a Saturday morning or something.
Yeah, I'd like to hear about that.
And then backfill it. I mean, I really think we should see with a contractor-
Well, if they could do it in the spring, I mean, that'd be-
That'd be ideal.
I guess if we're talking demolishing, is our department even still interested in anymore, using it as something, or is there something in Springfield, or?
It had to do with-
Maybe you could elaborate on the Springfield situation.
So my understanding is the fire department had wanted to do an actual burn in the house, not burn the house down, but just burn in the area of the house, and that's what the Illinois Historic Preservation told them that they could not do. There's agreements, I think, with the EPA, as well as, because it's in the historic area, it was not allowed. They've continued to run drills. They had a drill, I think, just last week. Mr. Gierman, is that right? It was recent?
Yeah, they were doing that last week, after some hours, running some drills, some of their operationary firefighters, using it as a teaching tool, training tool. And they also, they did some drills over the summer, so they are utilizing.
And they probably, at this, at this point, they probably had it longer than they anticipated, so I don't, I don't think the demolition would be kind of a gross interference with the fire department's-
I am happy they get to do some practice there, though.
I would simply say, let them know that it's gonna come down soon, and get any last drills in that they can.
So that sounds like there's a consensus, then, to, to basically solicit proposals for demolition, and proceed sort of promptly with that, you know, without making sure not to impact schools, I would say.
Right, as far as noise.
I'd also be interested to know, though, the cost of, obviously demolishing it, putting inside, because I mean, that's-
Right.
But then also, what's the cost for us to keep it up, until we do the facilities plan and think about it right? I mean, I would just sort of like to know, is it gonna cost, like, $10,000 to tear it down, put inside, but it's only costing us $500 to keep it up? I just would like to sort of compare those costs.
Sure, sure. You talking about maintaining the grass at that point?
No, he's saying maintaining it now, and it's-
Maintain it now until we decide, if we're gonna do something, whatever we're gonna do with that property, like they recommended, so we can just maybe do it all at once, maybe get some economies.
Okay.
Is it, Martha, is, am I correct in thinking the economy is, is not in the cost of taking the house down, which is gonna be a sort of a cost regardless of whether we do it now, or when we want to do something else with the property? The additional potential cost is that if we put inside, and then later decide to build in that location, that there would be, we'd have to, sort of, the cost of putting the sod in is a little bit of an extra cost, maybe, is that the, is that the-
Right, and we haven't bitted out, you know. I know our architect had sort of indicated that there, might there be an economy of scale of sort of tearing a structure down and building a structure up at the same time, but sort of the initial analysis would be that a demolition company comes in to do the demolition part, so it seems to me that the extra cost would be in doing something to kind of grate out the property, so it's safe for students to, to use. Yeah, so I, you know, I think it's really a question sort of to the board, and ultimately to the community, about having space to play now, with an understanding being that if an addition went up, and if that's not clear, and that's not clear in which direction on the building it would go, you know, might be play space that's used for a period of time that then might go away. And is that, is that considered a thing?
Is it fair to say that we could presumably do some simple landscaping without creating a large expense, just, just grading it properly, putting it inside, not worrying about making it look beautiful at this point in time? And that would be a modest cost, is that fair to say?
I would think so. Yeah.
Rob, do you have any other insight or information to share?
Um, yes, the economies of scale would be the tearing it down, and if you had to do any demolition on Ames School, if you did an addition, that would be some, that would be some other demolition that would save money. would be some other demolition that you would save money on the economy scale, but I do think that you would take out the foundation, you would tear the, you would tear the house down, take out the foundation, you know, fill up the hole and grade, and minimal, like you said, little, little flat landscape, and put some sod in, and the other things that you decide to put in temporarily, so I think that would be the plan, to make it as minimal a cost as possible for the initial teardown, to use the property as maybe a play area, what you decide to use it for.
Would spring break, would spring break be a natural time, given that the weather is kind of changing around that time, it'd be a reasonable time to start landscaping?
If we had, if we got the specs out to bidders, and then they could bid, and then they had time to, it'd be a process of, the bidding process could be the...
So you could come back with a proposal, some cost, you can answer the questions that Dave has?
Right.
Yeah. You may have very favorable quotes from a demo contractor now.
That's true.
Instead of waiting till the season warms up, I mean...
Earlier, yes, earlier, do it, get out right now when they don't have jobs.
That's true.
And they can, they can line up, and then you might get more favorable, more bidders.
And there's a process to be followed with the village and with learning neighbors, and so there's some details...
Exactly, through that checklist that's on there, we have to follow the checklist and, you know, following the checklist with the ROE, just make sure we follow that, get the bids, specs out, based on what the board determines of what we want to do with the property.
So the next step sounds like is for you to get some concrete, some, some definite proposals, as a cost, you know, of taking it down, and, and then once you can bring that back to the board, and then we can sort of, you know, decide based on how that, does that seem reasonable?
So we're not recognizing it as a potential action item right now?
No, I don't see what the action would be unless we...
To approve a demo permit.
Yeah, the, or to approve the process of going forward and...
Yes.
Demoling the building.
So you get the permit, you get quotes, then you report them back.
Correct.
Sounds good.
So approving the motion as...
As presented.
Okay.
Yeah. We already have a motion, so are there any, is there any comments or questions about this? If not, then Margie, please go to the roll.
Mr. Hunt?
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Mr. Regan?
Hi.
Mr. Marhol?
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Third item on old business is the annual strategic planning update. Dr. Madonia, who led that process a couple of years ago, was in the fall of 2015, is here to talk to us about the updated, the update, the annual update.
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you for inviting me here this evening to talk a little bit about the annual review and the strategic long-range plan. I'm actually very excited to talk to you a little bit about the expansion of the format of that plan, which I think will serve us very, very well. However, before I speak to that, I would like to make a comment to you and a recommendation to you based on the Strategic Planning Committee itself. And one point I'd like to make is that what I'm finding everywhere in all the districts that I serve, is that they're utilizing the Strategic Long Range Planning Committee for an ongoing format of collaboration, communication, and connection with stakeholders of the community on issues that the district faces. And so, you know, I compliment you for coming up with the idea that is really out there in the forefront, that districts are using everywhere to try to connect with their community and solicit input and give information back to the community on issues that you're addressing. So one recommendation that I have, and I've talked to Martha about this, and I want to share this with you as well, is to nurture and keep that membership alive, because as you know, through time, there will be attrition. You know, people will move out, people will graduate and go to District 208, and maybe their volunteer time will be over there, but we want to keep that vital and complete. And I think by doing that, it keeps that group as a vital entity for you to communicate, connect, and collaborate with your community on issues of importance. So that's one point I wanted to make. With reference to our annual review, I'd just like to share some ideas with you that I put in, into a memo format that's in your board packet, talking about merging together not just the annual review itself of what are the outcomes after 12 months and our benchmark of progress, but actually engaging the community in some issues of discussion. And so what we're looking at in this format, and I want to throw this out to you for your feedback, your comment, so that we can agree on what type of format we would like for our March 14th meeting. So what we're looking at as a proposal that we'd like to throw out there, based on the feedback that I received from you, is to start out with the Strategic Planning Committee meeting together as a whole group, and having every administrator of the five focus areas report out to the entire group, the 12 months of progress since the last time we had the annual review. And that, of course, is a very important piece, to show the community and the committee that their work has been formidable and that the district's moving forward with outcomes. And I know that both you and I are excited about that because that's a very rewarding time, it's kind of the fruits of our labor, so really looking forward to that. That format is a little different than what we did before, a year ago, where what we did is we had each administrator report out to just the focus area group, and then after they did that, then each focus group reported out to the whole group. But I think considering this format change, what that would do is maybe give people a sense or a feeling that they're the part of every discussion, that's the upside to it. I think the way we did it last year, where they reported out to the focus group first, the purpose of doing it that way was to let the focus group know the information first so they have some feeling of ownership, and actually had them present with the administrator to the whole group. So that was kind of the driver of why we did it that way. There is no right or wrong way, there are pros and cons to both, as I alluded to in the memo, so that would be a decision that you could make, we could do it either way, but to give everyone a feeling of ownership and involvement in every group, we could do it the way that I first referenced, which would be to have them, each administrator of each focus group, report out to the entire group, not just the focus group first. So that would be part one. And at the conclusion of part one, then the other idea was to expand the scope of our meeting and utilize our Strategic Long Range Planning Committee, along with anyone else who may attend the meeting, because it is a public meeting, it's not just for the Strategic Planning Committee, but to identify areas where we could have breakout groups that could reflect either, for example, in a discussion of instruction, climate, and culture, another one in finance and facilities, and another area for human relations, where we actually could, in each of those areas, people could select to go to each of those areas, and actually have kind of like a town hall format, where the board would be able to have an actual discussion with the community and the stakeholders about things they're doing in that area, what the drivers are, and collect input back from them. It kind of broadens the scope of the dialogue, because the annual review unto itself is really focused more on what are the outcomes. It doesn't have that broad expansion, and there's a lot of merit to the broad expansion. And so I think what you're doing is you're merging together a discussion of outcomes first, and then an open dialogue to the community on those topics, which I think is a wonderful thing. And so, and I actually have a school district right now that I work with that is going to convene the Strategic Long Range Planning Committee, not for strategic long-range planning work, but to discuss a dual-language program the district is considering, and to get dialogue and feedback with them. So that's just one example of how that group can be utilized for collaboration and connection and communication and input, and it's, it's really a very positive thing. And of course, in any meeting we have, and you've probably heard me reference this before, but I feel very passionate about this, and that is that we want to achieve our goal for the meeting, but we also want to maintain the relationship. In each of the dialogues that we have, we want to achieve what we set out to do, but we also want to walk away from that saying, we've enhanced our relationship with this group. So you get, it's a double win. So another option, instead of having three breakout groups, would be do five, one for each focus area. And the merger of some of those to get three, you can see where I have merged some of those together that were similar or like, as I referenced in the memo that's in your board packet. But we also could do five if that was, you know, something the board would like, and do it in that way, but that would be up to you. So I would just like to open it up to you for any questions you might have, and what you would like to see at that meeting based on what I presented.
Thoughts on the structure that Dr. Madonia is proposing?
It feels to me like the fewer breakout rooms, the more effective it's going to be. So if I'm reading this correctly?
Yes.
Option three, where you group together instruction, climate, culture, finance, facilities, and human relations, I mean, that's...
Yes.
When we, when we go into a greater minutia, a granular level than that, it just feels like it's too much.
I wonder if you could take that even one step further and really just make, and not have, and not have separate focus groups, but keep the structure you're having now, but let, I, I...
Everybody...
Last time, how, how many people do we have in the community, would you say?
That came last time, maybe about 30, 30 to 35.
30 people? That, that seems like it's manageable to have the administration sort of explain to what they've been doing, as you proposed, and then when we get to the second phase, everyone's part of that group, because I imagine everyone's got an interest in different topics, and then you could say, let's, let's have the discussion and just have one big focus, one big focus group, I guess.
So do it all in the same area, and then just move from topic to topic.
Exactly, exactly.
As we're having the dialogue.
Exactly.
I was going to suggest that, too, because I felt, I enjoyed hearing about our topic, but I felt like, oh, I was missing out on some of the others.
Yeah.
I know Linda had said that at a prior meeting, we wish we could have been a part of those conversations.
Okay.
And to even have separate rooms, I think is, I'd rather have it in one big room than to feel like they're, they're gone from the conversation.
Well, even my own, feedback from my own experience, I think, what, when, we had the meetings two times in a row, you got assigned a group on the first time, and then the second time when you came back for the follow-up, it was the same group all over again, which again, I felt kind of like, gee, gosh, you know, we covered this ground once, can we, can we see something else, another side of the coin? So definitely, I'm in agreement, the more we can spread this around or share that knowledge around, I think there's definitely, if we have the right size group, it is manageable.
And I think that's the beauty of it, is that your group is size manageable, right? Some districts with strategic planning committees of 110.
Yeah.
You know, and that's a little bit more difficult to pull that off. And I like the fact that it's, with the manageable component comes personalization, you know, you can, it will give you a more personalized dialogue, so I think that's a good idea.
Right. No, I agree with, I guess, doing it, I mean, I see the advantage of bringing in to like focus groups, but because it's smaller size, and then you're just...
Being able to do that, and like having an agenda, obviously, follow through, but I guess my only, my own caution is having, doing something like that is to make sure that we have like a facilitator that can, because I have an...
Oh, for sure.
Right, yeah, but to sort of keep, keep things on, right, but to keep things on track, right, because I know how things can easily fall off the rails.
I think Dr. Madonia is very, very accomplished at that.
No problem.
So, Joel, do you have any thoughts on that?
I, I think keeping the group together actually lets people see what's going on and feel like they're not pigeonholed into just one topic.
I mean, I also think it could be a picture, too.
Right.
It's like that, there is just more than like human relations, or facilities, or finance.
True. Well, and then when it comes time to work, I think we were like voting on recommendations or getting, giving our opinions on each of the other groups, what their results were, and again, it's like, well, I've just spent the whole evening talking about one thing and one thing only, I really don't have much knowledge or understanding of how you guys are reacting to your other items.
Keeps everyone...
Well, the summaries were very brief, so it's a little hard to make a decision.
So it sounds like we have a consensus then, basically we'll have the presentations first...
Yes.
About progress, and then we'll have like one big focus group to talk about the different items in succession.
And would it be three combined items or five? I think originally you said you thought three would be better?
Oh.
Or do you want to go five?
I don't, I would think the topics...
I think they can be independent of each other.
Independent of each other, okay.
It's my preference, but...
That's fine. Does everyone feel okay with that?
Yeah. Sounds good.
Because it kind of mirrors our plan, so I think it makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, looking forward to it.
Well, thanks very much, Dr. Madonia.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. All right, so that, that's going to be in March, right, March 14th?
March 14th.
And our, is the district planning to send out reminders to the people who were involved last time, and then try to solicit new people to come and all that sort of...
Right. So last time we did, what we're going to do is I think send a specific invite to the people that were on that original strategic planning committee, and then open it up to the larger community, and we did that last year as well, and I think the group was kind of a mix of people that had been on the original committee and then other people that were interested in what was going on, yeah.
Half and half, maybe, just a half, yeah. All right. We next move on to new business. The first item is District 96 student fees. I think we had talked very briefly a while back about student fees for the district, and Martha, would you like to summarize the results of your survey?
Sure, and I, actually, I'll ask Rob to come up, too.
Okay.
So Rob had conducted the survey, this really came out of the question, if you recall, back in November, about athletic fees, what we're paying for athletics, and if we were to consider the fees as we consider changes in transportation, so we felt it was important to bring forward just an overview of what current fees are and how we compare to what's going on in, in other neighboring school districts. Do you have any more to, that you'd like to add, Rob?
Just from the research, we, the district has not raised fees in a while, but it looks like, so the district seems a little lower than most other school districts, but not super out of line, so I guess the thought is, or the question is, does the board want to increase them or leave them the same?
When you say, I'm just looking, are you looking at the registration fees, or which you...
Right, the registration fees.
I mean, looking at the registration fees, of the sample you have here, it seems like we are lower than most of the other districts that you surveyed. Is that, is that fair to say?
If you go back to grade seven and eight, we, the district catches up to a lot of the districts, so in the first...
So we're, we're slightly, slightly lower than their districts?
Right.
Grade seven, eight, and then sort of lower grades were considerably lower, I think.
Right. And then Pleasantale just does all theirs, mostly with the technology fees, they don't charge the registration fees.
Okay.
Kind of kindergarten, somebody said kindergarten, 3K. Better than everything else. Is that one question I had, is, is there a reason for the gradual, like, increase? I mean, I understand conceptually why we do that, but...
I think that's due to the services, the amount of activities that they're involved in. Not, I don't mean extracurricular activities, the things that happen during their day, like how, so it has a very different structure than first grade.
No, I under, I understand that, but...
So that's why their fees...
But I mean, even from like kindergarten to fifth grade, there's, there's a $15 difference. I guess, is there a reason we do that? Because I know it's like some, some districts, it's the same for all the way through. I was just wanting to know.
You know, and again, it's hard, because I think, as Rob said, they weren't, they haven't been modified for many years. for many years. My assumption is that there's kind of a philosophy to it at the time that it was developed, that a lot of fees were originally thought of as more textbook fees. And so that might, again, I'm kind of guessing, that might account for why as children went up in the grades that it became more expensive. Yeah, I mean, I think it's interesting, you know, fees are, become their whole interesting, you know, own set of kind of questions. What is the philosophy? What is it about kind of providing that free and appropriate public education that feels kind of that just right amount that does address some of our costs? But it's kind of a nominal amount.
I have a question, because we buy separate supplies. Like, many of us buy the kits that are available.
Right.
And that's, I wonder what all of these other districts, what it includes? Does it include the textbooks? Does it include supplies? And I just don't know what they're getting for their registration fee.
So if you look at the last part of the...
Or is it the cost of the person taking the registration?
The bottom of the table, there is a breakout of some of the other...
Right.
Is that just for, is that just for our fees? Those are just our fees? Does it pair them with their districts then, right?
Or in other districts, if they, listen to me, we put it on the chart.
If they broke it out by, yeah.
I see, okay.
Transportation fees.
I see. Like River Forest seems to have a lot of fees.
And La Grange is very high comparatively and the same from kindergarten all the way through, which I think is interesting.
You know, my view on this is I don't see any strong reason that we should be an outlier one way or the other. I don't know if we should be like way less than everyone else or way higher than everyone else. I mean, it seemed to me there's, seemed like we should probably just, you know, matching what other districts are doing.
My initial thought was perhaps K through five or maybe one through five could be 100, but six, seven, and eight should probably stay the same.
I guess... Just to have parity with the other districts.
My question is, why would we raise the fees?
I guess that'd be my question, too.
What are they going to get that's different?
Right. If we're going to up the fees, I mean, I think, I mean, sort of going along with Martha's says, I mean, this is, we're supposed to buy like an education here. I guess if we're going to increase the fees, I think there needs to be a need associated to that increase.
I also agree with that.
I think you can look at the technology fee and see that we're not charging any.
When was the last time fees were raised?
Do provide a fair amount of technology, as we all know.
Were we able to determine?
For, no one seems to know who died, spent such a long time.
So if we don't raise fees and inflation is 2%, that means de facto we're lowering fees every year, right?
When's the last time they were, when's the last time they were changed?
That's what I just asked.
We're unable to determine. So it's been at least seven, at least seven years. We have a...
I mean, I would be open if we want like to put in something in place to like raise the fees based on like rate of inflation, to keep pace with that. I'm okay with that. I just don't want to sort of say, okay, let's increase the fees this year and then like wait another, I think it's just as long as like...
And wait another 10 years above them again, it seems arbitrary to me.
Right, so let's...
Make it rational.
And one way to do it would just be take the average of the, assuming these districts that you've chosen here are representative, I'm not sure, you know, how you chose this set, but take the average of these fees, take that as our fee, and then increase by inflation. Is that, I mean, that would be a simple way to proceed.
I think one of the reasons we charge a fee is that there is, you know, there is a cost to this, and I understand free and public education, but it is fair to ask a minimal amount to contribute.
I have another question. We have half-day kindergarten. What's, are these full-day kindergarten schools or, you know, because what's the money for when you're registering for kindergarten? I just want to know, what are we using it for?
Right.
Does it make sense to me? They're paying taxes.
River Forest is half-day, Western Springs is half-day.
Why are we raising a certain amount of fees?
I'm not sure, but the other ones...
The phrase activity fee indicates that there is an added expense to participate in that extra activity, right? That's what it sounds like to me.
That's what I understood.
Right.
You know, so there's got to be, to your point, Dave, there's got to be a catalyst, there's got to be a reason. I don't, I mean, I'm not, I don't like the conversation of, oh, let's raise our fee because, you know, our neighboring district charges this and why don't we charge that?
I agree.
I think the potential catalyst, the reason it came up sort of back for board discussion, it is just discussion at this point, was this idea if we were going to spend more on transportation for athletics specifically, would we want to represent that in our fees?
Well, that's a different issue than registering for the school year.
Right, there's different categories of fees. There's the registration fee, which is one category, and then there's the activity fee, which is another category. And even in the context of the activity fees, there are different kinds of activities, like there are certain things like the robotics club or like sports.
Right, but we drive ourselves, we don't take the bus. We drive ourselves.
What I was going to say is that basically, like some things like...
So we don't require transportation.
Right, some things like robotics or sports is only a small set of students can participate.
Right.
Other things like band or the drama club, it's open to everyone. And so there's a question there, too, is like, do we want to charge a different fee structure for things which are sort of open to everyone as opposed to, which are serving only a relatively small set of kids, and that's another question.
Right. I guess this is my thing with fees. I mean, I don't, I understand the purpose of these. I don't want to exclude kids from fees, and I don't want to exclude families from, if you like, up these fees and they're sort of, I mean, we're a wealthy community, but there are people in here whose $70 is a lot of money for.
It's a lot.
And so I just want to make sure that if we're going to raise fees, I mean, outside of inflation, I'm taking off the inflation debate because I agree with that, but if we're going to raise fees sort of arbitrarily, do we have something in place that will allow families who might not be able to afford these fees to get subsidized or waived the fees somehow? As long as we can protect somehow those people.
Families that qualify for free and reduced lunch have either waived or reduced fee. But I think maybe you're also speaking to families where they might not qualify for free or reduced lunch, but the fees are financially difficult.
They might be less likely to take an activity then if that money is going to something else. They wouldn't have the money for the activity, which could be a concern for them after school getting any kind of participation.
Right. I do want to just emphasize, though, that just this point, which is that if we haven't raised fees in at least seven years, if not longer, that is de facto lowering fees every year by inflation. So that is, we have been cutting fees in real dollars every single year, so presumably other districts...
I feel like they have been raised since my, I still feel like they might have been raised since my daughter was, my older daughter was in there. I disagree that they were never raised. I'd like to see...
We rely on the recollection of our district office staff and our longevity's seven years there.
The check, the check.
I'll look at my check.
Yeah. It's in there.
I mean, Jeff, I mean, to your point, you're right. We have essentially by de facto been lowering fees, keeping up with inflation. So, but I'm not looking to, right now, I'm not looking to correct the not raising fees for the last seven years. If we want to make a proposal to say, let's raise fees based on the rate of inflation going forward...
Keeping costs, keeping costs in real dollars.
I'm okay with that.
Well, I guess, I assume at one point or another, some of these fees make sense. I mean, registration, that's obvious. I mean, that one's tied to a lot of these, especially when you get to the activity fees. Some districts have this, some districts have that.
Right.
There's not really a rhyme or reason.
Right.
And it really makes me wonder what these things are, if they were originally tied to something, is that even still relevant now? And if we've been effectively lowering our fees each year, you know, have we covered it anyway, whatever at one time we were paying, having the fees paid for? Are we at this point really just paying for it out of regular, out of pocket?
I'm guessing that a lot of things have become out of pocket. I think about a lot of the stipends that we paid, and we have a very long list of, I can't remember the number right now, so I'm not going to repeat it, but a long list of all the stipends we paid to the various staff to do extra work beyond the standard day, school day. That's part of where I'm going with, I don't think raising fees a minimal amount is unjustified. And I think to David's point, we do need to pay attention to the families who, it is a burden.
Right.
But I think we have a way to do that.
But the stipends are for after-school. This is something for the school day. So how does that correlate?
But a lot of the kids participate in those after-school programs, and this makes it open to everyone.
And I think that's our duty to provide them.
What about, just the very particular question that was sort of the impetus for this discussion, which is the transportation for athletics? I know that Martha and the administration looked into different bus services. There seemed like there are some services that are more reliable than we currently use, but they're more expensive. And I think the question that sort of arose is, do we want to spend more to get the more reliable bus service? And if we do, do we want to pass on some of that cost to the participants? I think that was the original, just on that very simple question.
Yeah, yeah. Where we have something where we can actually quantify it and trace it back and say, this much, by raising fees this much, we're going to contribute, you know, some or all of the increase, that absolutely makes sense.
To your favor of passing on some of those costs, if we would...
Particularly when we talk about transportation, considering the terrible record of the current transportation provider, there's a definite, we get a definite benefit, the parents, excuse me, we get a definite benefit from those, from that increase. For these other fees, though, yeah, even where we're out of whack with other districts, I just, I guess, it becomes harder to justify, or if, I would feel like we're in a better place to justify it if we can quantify it or tie it back to something of this fee is going to cover this specific expense.
I don't even know what this covers. And I, I'm on the board, so I...
When you say this, you mean, what do you mean?
These fees. What does that mean? What does that mean? Who does that, what does that pay for?
It's a hard question to answer.
Well, that's what we need to hear about.
And again, speaking about in general about fees, is that I think back in the day when we used to really rent textbooks, I don't mean we in District 96, textbooks were rented, you'd pay for consumables, you'd pay for things that kind of were something that you used that year and you stopped using it, let's say, at the end of the year. Again, I'm guessing that there was, there was a rationale behind it at some time. I agree, it feels a bit unclear at this point in time. There was a question about would, would greater contribution toward athletic fees offset a change in transportation? And again, that really kind of led to a broader conversation that the board wanted to look at fees in general, not necessarily to change them, but just to understand them. You know, I wish, and it's always, I had more clarity to bring to you about exactly why and when, and it just isn't that clear. And I know Linda's not here tonight, but Linda had also shared that, you know, thinking about athletic fees, that our transportation, we don't often go far for games, that our uniforms have not been updated in recent history either, so doesn't feel like the fair and right thing to do. But I think that's a question. That's certainly a fair question. Not that we have to take action on it tonight, this is really just a discussion item and...
Would just, just to go around the room, babe, I'm just curious about this one particular, I take your point, this is a very complicated thing with many different pieces, but just to get a simple question, like would we be willing to pass on some fees for the athletics? I think for a better bus service, you think, you said you would be, you would be willing to do that?
Totally. If nothing else, based on the experience with the current provider, several, you know, always late, I mean, always late and even no shows at times.
Right. Sherry, what are your thoughts on that?
I'm undecided.
Undecided, Joel.
I would be in favor of it, and I'm going to add the technology, especially at the higher, the six, seven, eight.
Right.
We're already at this fee structure.
Well, but we have no technology fee. And we provide a Chromebook to every student.
Yeah.
I'd support it as well, Jeff. You know, and I think this research that you provided is, you know, it's good context for future consideration.
Right. So your favor of passing on some of the transport costs if we decide whether it ever must?
I would be as well with, sort of with the, a little nuanced, though, that if there's a kid that wants to participate in a sport activity, that we somehow make it so that they can, I mean, not that they're going to be participating in like five sports activities, but if there's like a specific sport or something that they want to do, as long as we can somehow have a policy that will allow them to...
I agree. No student should not be able to participate in any activity just because they can't afford it. We agree with that.
I think it was asked last time, it was, I remember you talking about, you know, the reduced lunch being the bar for reducing the fees. As I recall, though, I don't know that there's much participation in that, even as it stands?
No, there is. Our current percentage of...
15% reduced lunch?
Yeah.
Not in reduced lunch, but in fee waivers, I guess, to express it that way.
So fee waivers tend to go hand in hand with the free and reduced lunch. If you apply for the free and reduced lunch, you also get the fee waiver. So if it's about 17% of our population...
80% at Howzer and 70% at...
Then they would also get the fee waiver.
And that would, that, we see that on the activity side as well?
We would, we would offer that on the activity side.
I understand it's offered, but are we seeing similar percentages of?
Yeah, I would, again, I would guess, and I have to really do the wholesome additional data, is that families that qualify for it probably take advantage of it. And then we also have families where there may just be unpaid fees. So we probably recover even less than, if you take the sort of fee per student and then reduce the free and reduced lunch, there may even be a greater number where fees haven't been paid. Is that fair, Rob?
I think it's pretty fair.
So would it be possible to do something where like for that category, do you really have subsidized fees?
Yeah, so I think too, and again, some of you who've been here longer, I look over to Merrill and Pam, also I think our PTAs and PTOs have sometimes supported essentially some scholarship for some of our, so things like going on some of the overnight trips at Howzer, there's an additional...
Yeah, we're subsidized through additional donations from parents, so it's, we're put out our number. We also ask appearance for things like field trips, we're charging all family, that's what I'm like. Oftentimes, if it's an extracurricular, if the cost is substantial, they'll say, what can't you contribute if you're a free and reduced lunch family? So oftentimes, they're going to partial pay. And sometimes, it's complicated because sometimes there's things where parents do want to contribute that fee, to feel like they're contributing towards a child's activity. So there will be times when even a free and reduced lunch family will want to try to contribute to something, to be a part of, to feel like they're being part of that process. So you can't say that there's, our data doesn't say how often they have, and we always have the scholarship opportunity available.
I would think the one thing, if we're continuing this discussion at another time, I think the one thing that's missing here, the, we have the numbers broken down by individual, what we're missing are the aggregates and what these add up to.
Right.
And this is for one child, if you had a family of four, might that look like...
Might be hard to add up, though, because some people participate once.
Space them out.
Well, you space yours out.
So I guess some of the things that I think, I think there's a sort of somewhat of a consensus on are that if we have targeted reasons for increasing fees, for example, an example of which would be better bus service for the athletics, I think there is more or less a consensus that some or all of that cost is reasonable to pass that on to the, as a fee. I think that, is everyone okay with the idea that if we're going to have fees at all, they should be, they should be somehow indexed to inflation so that 10 years don't go by and really it's...
Agreed.
It doesn't necessarily have to be every single year, or I would think you get some crazy decimal, I mean, round.
No, we're not making it according to people.
I guess I do, I do have a question here. Like, see fees for like hot lunch and milk? I think that should just be tied to actual costs. I mean, there are certain fees that we should just, I mean, that seems pretty direct. I mean, we don't have any...
Yeah, it doesn't, that wasn't applying to us.
It doesn't apply to us.
Right, we have no fee at all for that, in fact, yeah. And then the other thing I think there sounds like there's consensus on is that if students are not able to pay, we don't want to make them pay, obviously, we don't want to subsidize them. Are there any other points that people have on the topic of fees that we should sort of ask the administration to look at more carefully?
I do wonder here, where I see the yearbook, is that, don't we pay for this?
We do.
Maybe that's, yeah, so it's just not a fee, it's just we pay for it separately.
Did you buy your book yet?
Yeah, so...
Yeah, because I mean, the milk, I mean, we pay.
Yeah, I guess...
So I guess, to your point, what's the difference between a fee and, I guess...
Like a purchase of an item?
Right, right.
I think a fee applies to everyone regardless of whether or not they want that item or not.
That's right.
Say the yearbook.
I got it, okay.
Is that fair? That would be my interpretation also.
Okay.
Do we know how much we receive annually in fees, when you add up all the fees across all the students?
The registration fees is probably about $228,000 per year.
So it's significant, it's not a small number, even with our low fees, it's 1% of our budget. Any other requests for the administration to look at things, or specifically?
Or if there's something specific, like, oh, 10 years ago, we didn't do this, but we do it now, and it's not covered, they'll let us know, but I have, you know, I need more information.
I mean, we could go, and we didn't do a sort of a deep, deep dive, I'm looking to Margie about, you know, going into, like, trying to, be going through old board agendas and trying to determine when we might have last changed fees, but it's not easily recalled information.
I can go back through board book as long, I mean, and then we'd have to go through manually, you know, those dates.
So Martha, do you think you have some direction now about the, sort of, obviously, this is not the final word on fees, but do you think you have some direction of where do you want to hear, anything else you'd like to hear from the board at this point in time, and we have some, it sounds like some ideas that-
Mm-hmm. I have some, some direction.
The other thing I could do for Martha is run a consumable cost. Does that apply to the math books? Because we come from a separate place, though, with the curriculum budget, is it different?
Well, sometimes the registration fee, like, that's historically, where registration fee, what if we have, they have been some, like, the consumable cost rating for, like, the math work, or spelling book.
There's just all the paper they use.
So, yeah, so I can just look at it, how it relates.
That'd be interesting to know, yeah.
So to bring more information back to the board, maybe some additional clarity, if we can get a better understanding of actual costs and our actual, our actual history if we can, yeah, yeah. And then, then how the athletic fees could maybe be, you know, separated out, and what a recommendation might be for that.
Any other comments about this topic?
I do, I do wonder, though, where the things, in particular, we have the one thing of the yearbook, I don't know if there's, if there's a chart for graduation, or if there was anything with that, I can't remember it. I don't know if, I don't know if anything else supplies, but I would just wonder how that fits into the overall aggregate per student cost for those things that we currently purchase. Maybe that's not a worthwhile comparison, just that, I guess, I see the yearbook fee for the one, one district jumps out at me in that regard.
Right. I just have a general question about the survey, if you got, I don't know how many, 10 or 12, I'm not sure how many, 10 or 12 different districts. It seems like when we do surveys, they tend to vary, the particular districts vary somewhat from one survey to the next. How did you sort of come up with this?
This is kind of a, districts kind of a combination of districts I was looking at and some of the ones that Mr. Sellers looked at, and so I took the group and put them together.
No, we've had that discussion before, I agree with you, it's confusing to know what's our comparable.
Right.
Any other comments about this topic? If not, then thank you, Mr. Holmes, we move on to item two in new business, registration and residency verification update. I think Martha, you had, you had some thoughts about how you wanted to run that this year.
Sure, so this is, as you know, this, the current school year, this past summer, we asked all families in District 96 to come in and prove residency in person. That I had been asked really by the board the year before that, to really look at our registration and residency processes and how might we improve them. Learned a couple of things over the past year and a half, certainly, that really, probably primarily what I learned is that the process had become very decentralized, that the school secretaries were gathering residency and registration documents. And so I think in the summer of 2016, we agreed to centralize the process, and also at that time, we were going with the online registration for the first time, right, done in summer of 16. So a number of, you know, things were changing, looking at then continuing to sort of, it didn't feel very clear that, that summer of 16, so then the recommendation was for summer of 17 to really have all families come in, and that we would really establish kind of a baseline, and that we would know that our families that were currently registered and enrolled had, had done an in-person residency process. Some school districts do that annually. I don't think that, you know, we uncovered, you know, gross, sort of, you know, abuses of residency, or enrolling in District 96 not being residents. So our recommendation now is to continue to centralize the process, we're going to continue to use an online registration process. And then in terms of the in-person residency proof, we've talked about doing it when you're new to the district, obviously, but also then at the times when children are in kindergarten, third or sixth grade. With this idea, but I think having kind of a, you know, real-time, live touch point with families to review kind of current living situation, and make sure everything is up to date, makes some sense, I think it's a responsible thing to do as the school district, obviously. But doing it annually, from what, from what we understand right now, doesn't seem to be perhaps sort of the most effective process for us. So this is an overview of that, is that families would come in, at the time of having children at K, grade three or grade six, and, or being first time to the district. And that then annually, part of the online registration process would be that families would upload a lease or tax bill, or something that would be sort of that, you know, primary documentation of ongoing residency in the district.
Can you remind me, don't, I have a kindergartner coming up, so I know we go get all the doctor visits done, is this K3 and 6 kind of coincide with that? Because that would seem natural if you're going to bring all these papers.
Right.
And I know 6th grade is one of those, isn't it?
Right.
Second and 6th.
Yeah, yeah. And one of the things we had talked about is that the, the medical is required for children to be in school past October 15th, and so that's something our nurses carefully monitor. But it doesn't in that registration residency date, and we really tried to assure families of this, that if they didn't have their school physical in, it wasn't going to prohibit them from doing registration and residency. Residency is really that proof that you, you know, that you live in the district, that you're, you know, regular and ongoing, you know, nighttime abode, as the, you know, school code says, is in District 96. So, I mean, that is an interesting question of could or should it coincide with the, yeah.
I'm just like the rest of us that are going to go anyway and bring a bunch of papers. I mean, it would make sense, but-
Yeah. We've also looked, and Pam helped me out here too, looking at doing the medic, being able to upload the medical through the online process also.
Yeah, because those are always separate, as far as I remember.
Medical forms still need a physician's signature, but unfortunately, the component which, the medical, which is impossible to resolve, you forgot, the physician doesn't fill that out, so you can have that electronically, here's title, and we get the physician's signature.
And our nurses have asked that we somehow try to separate the, bringing in the medicals, because they want those, those are the documents they need, as opposed to the registrar.
And if, and I would caution that if we start putting the medical online, that we make sure the vendor-
No, I'm not saying putting it online, I'm just, I have to walk into the building, can I do two things at once instead of one?
All right, but I thought, I thought you talked about uploading the document.
No, I just mean, if I have to walk into this office and register and write my title, or whatever else I'm bringing, my mortgage, can I just bring it all at one time?
But if we should go down that route, or to sort of make sure the vendor is compliant with healthcare-
Yeah, medical records.
Right, health compliance, because that's a big issue.
Absolutely, and I'll double, I'll double check those medical requirement years, and if there's a-
I think it's K26, right?
Okay. I mean, that would be one option, is to look at K26, if there's some interest in doing that, I mean, the K3, is this looking at kind of a midpoint, and?
The reason that we would scale back from doing it annually is not necessarily like for extra work for office staff, but it's more of a convenience for people registering, or?
Not a necessity, perhaps.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think there was a question of, did we have District 90, children enrolling in District 96 that did not live here, did we have a good process to make sure that we had kind of a clear scrutiny, you know, to that question? And I think what we've learned is, I think our processes are good, I think we've improved them in the sort of, you know, recent past, and I think there's a way to kind of create a, something that feels predictable, something that feels very functional and effective in terms of looking at that, so. Yeah, and it was, certainly was a, not only a time demand on district office staff, but I think there was a time demand on families that wasn't entirely appreciated, I mean, it's a busy time of year, and so I think if we feel that we have a, an effective process without having families coming in every summer, that, that feels appropriate.
The families still have to give you documentation that they live here every year, right? Just no question, I put them coming in in person.
Right, like, if you recall, we did some evening out, you know, from a, for, let's say, from a working parent's perspective, when am I going to come, when am I going to get this done, just, you know, even remembering to do it.
So it's not, so it's not that, that documentation is not required every year, it's just being uploaded, as opposed to coming in person?
Right, and coming in in person seemed to present a different burden to families, and also allowed us kind of a different process of review, too. And there's certainly school districts that do that, every family, every year, in person.
I think I have a better understanding of the difference, how you're describing it now.
So you want to use that as an action, as an old business action next time, or is it?
So was everyone okay with this, this sort of proposal, Martha, that, every year, everyone has to, to give the documents to the district office, but only on kindergarten and either second or third or sixth grade, does the family have to come in in person to sort of, is that, is that, you know, everyone's okay with that scheme?
Or the other criteria that Martha identified here, or two other criteria that you have to do, complete in person, right?
Right, if they don't, yeah.
Right. New leases, families new to the, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I think for sure, new to the district, you need to see them in person.
Right, right. I mean, we can give everybody time to kind of think about it and bring it back, put it under old business next time.
Sounds good. So are there any other comments about this topic, then? If not, the next topic is, well, to be revisited, I guess, the next topic is kindergarten enrollment planning for next year, which I guess will quickly be upon us.
Mm-hmm.
Martha, did you?
Sure, so we do a kindergarten registration enrollment night on March 8th, and last, at last month's meeting, there was conversation about potentially enrolling two sections, assuming the numbers are there, enrolling two sections of kindergarten at Blithe School by kind of offsetting what families that might have assumed or considered that they were families in the, in the central school area. So again, I would, if this is something that the board wants to move forward with, it's something that I would probably speak about very directly and explicitly through website communication, the invitation to the kindergarten registration, as well as speak to families at the kindergarten registration night. Because I think there's a, we've talked about the boundaries of District 96, but certainly families that assume, from where they live, that they would perhaps be attending, in this case, it would be families that might assume they're attending Central, that might be recommended for enrollment at Blithe.
Does that mean they would stay there?
And that means they would stay there, so it really starts to speak to the-
Yeah, that's, that's a critical discussion, and we had the algorithm that Dr. Miller made, I'd like to see that being used. I haven't seen it being used, as far as I know. I want to know where they fit, where's the best fit, it was supposed to be, you know, who's, what's the walkable distance for a child, for example? And I, that's my request, that we look at that, if you're going to consider that.
I think that, I think, I definitely am in favor of looking seriously at that, and I guess maybe that, what I'd be tempted to say is that, let's see where, you know, as Sherry is indicating, let's see where actually the kids look like they're going to be living now. One of the difficulties is there are 140, 150 kids that register in kindergarten every year, but only half of them are assignable, only the firstborns are assignable. So if you assume about half the kids that enter are firstborns, we only get to assign 70 or 75.
Right, because the rest have siblings.
And that, that, they may not end up, you know, living where you kind of ideally would like them to live, to get this sort of configuration, so I'd be tempted to say, would I be, I don't know if you were comfortable with this, but I'd be tempted to say, we will decide when we see where the kids are living, whether we're going to have two sections at Blithe and two at Central, or continue with three at Central and one at Blithe, that would, that'd be my temptation, but maybe-
What are you going to do with this afternoon space, if it's not going to be kindergarten? What are you going to do with it?
So the kindergarten, the afternoon space right now is used for the Kite program.
Right.
So what it would mean is the kindergarten teacher, again, I would assume would teach an AM and a PM section, and we would relocate Kite, so.
Because we currently have two, do we, I mean, tell us, tell us the current kindergarten situation at Central, how many sections?
Three sections, the, three sections at, three sections at Central, so there's one teacher that teaches an AM and a PM, so teaches all day, and then the other teacher teaches just an AM section, and then she does the Kite program in the afternoon. So we're running Kite at three sites, right?
Yeah, well, Ames, I mean, well, Ames is the morning Kite, because there's a space, there's a space.
But we think we could find a location for Kite if we had to, you know, if we needed to run a full AM and PM section at Blithe, but it does, it speaks to this assumption of them, those still children being able to stay there on into first grade, second grade, third grade, so.
I do wonder about that, particularly with Blithe, are we assuming that we're making architectural changes at Blithe somewhere down the road to make that, those second sections continuous? And if so, I guess, what's our breakpoint, or how many years into this do we get before-
How could they stay there, there's no space for-
Right, it embeds all those assumptions, it absolutely does, yeah.
Very early, I don't think this is too early.
Do we have a breakpoint, though? Without a preschool, there, we could run, easily, we could run six full sections and then three additional sections, they've done that in the past.
But that's without, where would you move them?
So that's, that's-
There's always a domino that someone gets moved.
We would have to move preschool either to Central or somewhere else.
Right, which is the same problem.
We would, we would basically-
You're just shifting it somewhere.
Well, we shifted it, but we have the option of possibly expanding at Blithe and netting two additional classrooms to the district, which is, which is 4% of our classroom space, which is a lot, so.
Right, I mean, that's, that's-
But that doesn't have to be done immediately, that could be done.
I'd rather see what facilities review, we're on the decision on this.
Because that's my concern, is if we split them out, and then we-
Then you go back and change it.
Right, go back and change it, like, where we, I just think, let's just sort of wait to see what we're going to do with facilities before we offer that up. I mean, I just, just because it, while it would alleviate some problems this year, it could open up more problems down the road, and that's my concern.
But if we're talking about, it's at the expense of preschool, so that almost seems to me like, okay, then the breakpoint is five years? And that, you know, we get through, it gets through kindergarten through?
Yeah, it really depends on our enrollment.
Okay.
It, it does, it starts to speak to an assumption that we would do a renovation of potentially the auditorium space. So, I mean, that, that's why it's coming up tonight for just discussion, because we've talked about this as an idea, not a clear-cut recommendation, but an idea, and then what we know is by March 8th, families are starting to talk to their own children about this, it's going to be your school in the fall, and, you know, all those things that we know go into just sort of the planning of enrolling a kindergartner. So if this is something that we think is at all possibility for fall of 18, it is time to, to be thinking about, talking about it now, as we are, if we think that this is something that should wait at least a year, and that's, that's certainly another possibility. But that, that's really, to speak to the kindergarten enrollment starts to speak to these longer-range questions.
Well, and it's kind of an idea plus an assumption, instead of, because you're assuming about that auditorium space, which we have no idea.
Well, as I said, we-
It seems premature.
We could run Blithe at one and a half, easily, one and a half, maybe, maybe one plus four. It has been done in the past, it's something that was done, I think consistently up through the Lamberson era, I think it stopped with Dr. Sharno and Trama Lewis, and it's been sort of winding off. It was our, when we came on the board, that was the last year, there was two sections at Blithe that rolled off in fifth grade, but up until that time, that was a consistent policy of the board, was to make Blithe a one and a half section school.
Didn't have the preschool considerations then?
We didn't have preschool, one of the questions I have is, right, we, I see we're adding more and more kids to the preschool all the time, I see we added nine already this year, how big do we want to make the preschool? I mean, that's another question, we might make that arbitrarily big, it seems like it's growing, you know, constantly, so that's, that takes space, and I think it's some discussion we have to have.
Right. I personally feel it's premature, until I see facilities review to decide about next fall for families that are going to have new kindergartens and emotional experience, and to undo someone's idea about where their child's going to go, I don't know.
Making the decision now really makes that decision for us.
It makes it more-
Yes, it definitely, it sounds like it locks us into it.
Yeah.
And it's not an action item for tonight, it's really just a new, it's a discussion item, knowing, though, that the timeline starts to, you know, starts to be a bit, a bit pressing.
Well, because March, I mean, they're going to come in and want to talk about-
Right, if we're going to do it, I would want to, you know, be explicit with families about that idea.
And that's why I feel it's premature. I don't think you can do it in time, or even figure out a solution in time for March.
Figure out a solution for what?
For what you're proposing, for asking them to move.
What's this, I mean, what, that is?
We don't know our numbers yet, or where the preschool would go.
I sort of agree with what Richard, I mean, said, it's like, if we go forward with this, we're sort of locking ourselves into a decision, and I'm not comfortable locking ourselves into a decision, because I would feel that if we did this, that we would then have to do something at Blithe to make it a two-section school.
Is that true, though? Or just one section, adding one to kindergarten, or one section, I'm not sure that's-
To add a section of kindergarten next year, no, and then I think, again, there are some rooms that are, you know, again, programming that's important, you know, one, one idea is that you could, if, let's say, you didn't do an auditorium renovation, is you could move a classroom into what's currently the multipurpose lunchroom, and kids could eat in the gym, like they do at other schools. I mean, there are, you know, there are, there are ways that you could consider, but I agree that it's, these are things that I've been thinking about, that the administration, I think some of the members of facilities committee, but this is not all, you know, fully, for like, fully baked yet, you know, so if this is something we want to hold on, it's just that, as we know, school districts, schools, we plan pretty far in advance, because, yeah, children are coming, September seems far off for August, but it's not.
The other consideration I have, which I think is, is, makes it to me a little more pressing, is that I've become more convinced that having two sections of students is an advantage, in a school district, is an advantage to the kids in that school and to that school.
I agree.
And we are allowing ourselves here the opportunity to do that, and I think that would be better for the kids if we, if we have that, and I think, I do think that the preschool is an issue, but I think we can solve that problem by moving some-
It also involves historic considerations that we need to talk to the village about, whether we modify the building, and I don't know if we know all the answers to this, or the auditorium itself, I mean, we don't know how that community feels about the auditorium.
Whatever, every room we open up at Central, or every, every section we opened at Blithe, we open a room at Central.
I understand that, and I'm a Central family, I get it, there'd be more room, but I'm I understand that, and I'm a Central family, I get it, there'd be more room, but I'm not sure about it.
But we could move the preschool here, there's no, there's no loss of space here, even if we couldn't do something with the auditorium or the auditorium at Blythe, even if we couldn't, let's say, we haven't changed the amount of rooms available in the district, so worst-case scenario, we'd move the preschool to Central step by step, just as we add more sections, I don't, I don't see this as like losing space in some sense.
No, I'm not talking about space, I'm talking about families and the impact on it.
Right, and I'm saying that's good for those families at Blythe, that's what I'm saying.
Maybe, if they, but what if they had their whole family's structure gone to another school, and you're moving their entire, but let's say they have high school kids, whatever it is, I think that's odd to move them to a different school.
It's throwing in a lot of ifs, I mean, of course, that, that may be the circumstance, it's just.
It might be, but.
There are many families now.
But there's a lot of ifs, they're asking me to decide on something when we don't know about a auditorium, we don't know about, well, that seems very fast.
So, but if, if we were to make the changes to the auditorium at Blythe and the preschool to staying there, or we're just saying the preschool moves as an alternative to, to getting space at Blythe for two sections?
I think that gives us, if we, if we do something with the auditorium, I think gives the option of keeping the preschool there, if we don't do something with the auditorium, I think we, and we continue to add sections to Blythe, we would have to move the preschool, and obviously, a room would open at Central, if we're moving the kids from Central, so we would.
Or you'd build an addition at AMs big enough to possibly take on the preschool.
Well, that's, there's something to be spoken for there, right, I guess, when we talk about bringing the preschool to Central, I'll come a couple of points down and talk about the traffic study here for the drop-off.
I was going to say, because we just heard about traffic at Blythe due to the preschool addition, and now we're going to move it to an extremely congested area. I don't know.
There's no easy solution.
I'm not asking for an easy one, but I'm asking for information, if you want me to just decide.
All right, yeah.
I clearly favor this plan, but I'm sounding a little naughty here.
You make a lot of valid points, particularly in the, in the idea of having two sections at Blythe and, you know, having kids have other sections or other places to go, rather than seeing the same kids year after year after year until they get to Hauser.
I get it, I get it.
That definitely makes a lot of sense, there's, there's a lot of validity there, that it does, though, it really sounds like if we move forward with it, that we lock ourselves into the changes at Blythe, which we don't have a full understanding of yet.
I don't know if that follows, though, I mean, I know, I know if it does, I don't know if it does lock us in, if we're willing to move the preschool, we moved the preschool from Hollywood two years ago, and that was, that was not a hard decision, moving the preschool is not, it's not that hard a thing, right, there, there's a two-hour program, you know, for, for the kids, it's, and it's not a major change, they're, they're already traveling across town to get to Blythe or to Hollywood or wherever.
There is a change with the traffic, and there's a change with the use of the playground up front, which is extremely busy, the preschool next door uses it as well, so.
Yeah, there are trade-offs, no matter what you do, I agree.
So, is this going to be an action item next board meeting?
Well, I think that's one of the conversations we're having now, is that do we want, it sounds like, I'm not sure.
Right, we, it doesn't have to be, if it's, if sort of the, the discussion leads us to the fact that we want to wait at least a year, it's just that I, you know, we, and again, it was, they were preliminary conversations, but knowing then that March 8th looms, you know, March 8th is kindergarten registration night, so if we're thinking about doing this, I think we're better to be upfront about our communications, but if we're not, it can hold.
But you need direction before March 8th, that's really what this is.
Arguably, the flexible boundary policy already gives Martha the authority to do what we're talking about. I don't think she, I don't think she needs the board to say, two sections here, one section here, I think the flexible boundary policy sort of authorizes you to decide on what's the optimal allocation of students in the district, conditional on, you know, neighborhood schools and so forth.
It does, but every time we talk about boundary issues, it becomes a very large community-wide discussion.
Right.
I think it's an emotion, we know it's an emotional conversation, so, you know, I said earlier about, you know, as a, as a parent, I think you would drive by your child's new school and say, this is where you're going to kindergarten in the fall.
I can tell you, that's what happens.
And, so if we think there's really going to be a change for some of those fam, I think it would be nice to sort of, you know, be upfront about it.
Before it comes to this, you're right.
So where do people stand, do we, do we want to pursue this or not?
I don't want to pursue it until the facilities review.
I want further consideration on this thing, I'd like to see it on the agenda next time.
Next time, okay, talk about it further?
Yep.
By next time, next business meeting, we'll have heard the report of the facilities committee, which is going to happen in February 7th, I think, right?
Right.
So we'll have heard that, we can then talk about it at the next business meeting, maybe people will have some further ideas, and then that gives, still gives us plenty of time for you to.
I don't know about plenty of time, it's pretty, I think it's pretty quick if you ask me.
You're just going to catch your.
So put it back on February 4th.
No, no, but I'm going to be, the proposal needs to be completed.
So, so we're going to discuss action items?
We're going to discuss the, uh, sort of facilities meeting on this, call on the 7th, and then we could potentially make it an action item on the, on the next board meeting, basically.
So on the 7th?
On the, whatever that, whatever that, the 21st.
Okay, 21st, yeah.
Which we could then still have to defer, it's just, you know, right, okay, thank you.
Okay. Next item is the District 96 traffic study, so Martha, would you like to give us a review of the original traffic study from 2014, and also what you're hoping to?
So, there was a traffic study done in 2014, my understanding was a shared study with the, both the Village of Riverside and the school district, I actually believe there's even like a shared payment for the, the actual study, it was really to look at kind of flow of traffic around town, there was some, there were some recommendations made about pickup and drop-off, pedestrian crossings, I think, crosswalks, timing of, you know, crossing lights, that kind of thing. As part of the facilities plan, one of the conversations that, that certainly come up is this, the congestion and the combination of play and parking spaces really at, at all of our schools in, in different ways, and so one of the ideas the architect had is that we would pursue our own traffic study to look at both sort of the pickup, drop-off, traffic flow around the schools, but also to really particularly take kind of a, what I would call an internal look, at looking at parking and play spaces, and is there something that we could learn from traffic engineers and that level of analysis around, are there ideas that we haven't thought about, are there things about, you know, again, how we could, I see it as separation of play and parking as well as pickup and drop-off. As our architect said, she's, it's something that really could stand alone as its own study, it doesn't really need to wait for the long-range facilities plan to be, you know, sort of fully understood, adopted, embraced, it's like, kind of traffic, play and parking, we know create kind of their own unique situations here in District 96 that are probably worthy of some additional analysis. So it's really, again, preliminary conversation around that idea, thinking about the fact that this was done just in 2014, I think the focus in this particular study, if we were to do it, would be, again, sort of a more kind of granular, more internal look at some of our questions around play and parking is the one that comes to, to my mind most clearly.
There's some really important data collection contained in this report that, I mean, that maybe fluctuates with enrollment, of course it fluctuates with enrollment, but I think there's valuable data here that I don't really see a value in duplicating.
I read, I mean, this is the first I read the report, it seemed like there was a, there is a lot of data in here, but it seemed like we're just moving the problem from one area to another on the campus.
Could you say that?
It looked like we were just moving the problem from one area on the campus to another, like some of the recommendations on solutions, and so that was my concern sort of with the report, and some of the solutions I thought were, they didn't seem to really have, it's, it seemed a little off-base, there was like one saying, giving people cards, I mean, I did that for my daughter's preschool when we were in Oak Park, that does not work very well.
The what, I'm sorry to.
You know the placard that you put in, you pull it up and you have a card on the hiccup?
And I don't, did we two try something like this in the past?
I.
I vaguely remember having a card, but I'm not sure if that's true.
I have a question about enforcement, of certain signs that already exist, I'll give you the Central Hauser one on, that comes around by the district office, it says right here positively, no parking or standing, but all day long, and for an hour before school is out, there's standing and parking there, so, which creates a huge backup and people double park to let them, so, are we even trying to enforce the signs that exist? It's a question.
We'd have to ask the village to do that.
There's no one ever there, and.
Well, because that's a police.
Because I, I get it, but we have people.
But we do, the police do have a presence here.
They do.
Quite regularly.
They're not enforcing it, they're not enforcing it, they just sit there for hours.
I agree with you, absolutely, oh yeah, no, they don't, they don't enforce that.
It's a problem because kids are crossing double parks and could get hit, and, because they're doing what they're not supposed to be doing, so.
Some of the best morning experiences, some of the best morning drop-offs are when we have a policeman out there directing people, waving them in and out.
Because they're all behaving themselves.
Yes, and they're efficient, and the guy's moving them in, he's moving them out, and it goes fast.
Yeah.
And that's great when it happens, but I, I, I don't know if there's a plan for that, or what days it happens, or what days it doesn't.
I don't know, I don't know, because I've dropped my daughter off in Chicago downtown, there's obviously no parking, but they have people that will absolutely not let you park there, you let your kid off, and if you're not ready, you circle the block and you try again, and that's it.
Like at O'Hare.
And somehow they, somehow they don't, somehow they don't.
So is the question, is it just a question that, are we, do we want to, to pursue or investigate another traffic study, is that sort of the question that you're asking the board?
Yes.
Having looked at this report and seeing that there's really not that much innovation that went into the suggested improvements, I would say no, the data's valuable, but I think the data scales with enrollment, and it's not going to change very much in terms of pickups and drop-offs and traffic patterns.
What was the cost the first time around?
We paid 6,000-somethings.
Sixty-eight hundred, I think, that was our portion.
And the village paid some other.
Yeah, and it's unclear to me, yeah.
I guess, Martha, I have a question, what do you think is the advantages of doing another study, I mean, do you have?
You know, Joel, you used the word innovation, and I think that's one of the, the hints that, you know, that our architect said, is are there things that were not considered or, or perhaps weren't, maybe were considered, weren't implemented because they really spoke to like a different configuration of a parking lot or a cutout of, you know, and again, I, I'm not, I don't want to propose things because those are some of the things that are, again, have been just in conversation with the architect, talked about as things that are, might be worth considering.
I know you mentioned, the architect mentioned a, a pull-in or something, but those, that's not going to help the flow, the report has some questions, some of the things were, actually have already been implemented, there was a comment about relocating the crosswalk in front of Central, that was done.
The traffic flow in the back of Central, I think also.
And it's.
The traffic flow behind Central really follows this, this plan.
It does.
It's from this plan, right?
There's, we're in a location where our facilities are built, the, the general location of the building and driving, driveways are not going to change, the roads certainly aren't going to change, you can, we can suggest minor improvements, but overall, there's not a lot of big changes that are going to happen, even based on just this. I don't know how you can say that. Looking at this report and professional knowledge.
You're saying, Joel, that you're not expecting.
I would not expect a lot of.
I mean, what cutout could possibly, possibly alleviate that?
Well, so, it was said that 6,800 was our portion, it means that, was that 50%? Or what was?
I need to ask Nancy, she's.
Right, we were unable to, we were able to find our payment of 6,800, we were not able to find the actual bill, and, you know, I could certainly go to the village and they may, they may recall, I did talk to Jessica Francis, the village manager, just knowing that it was a shared, some kind of shared agreement, that they have also done an updated traffic study with KLOA, that was really to look at general traffic flow in the village, not specific to the, to the schools.
Has Carrie actually seen this report?
Mm-hmm.
She has seen this report.
Yeah.
And she's still requesting an additional report?
Yes.
Or recommending?
Yeah, recommending, it'd be, with this idea of, again, maybe proposing innovation or change that could, could be thought through differently, and we, like, we just talked about the early learners preschool, I mean, I think this is something we could work with the village and figure out, but looking at a different configuration for drop-off and pickup there, we know there've been some community concerns about the, the sort of change in traffic flow in that area right now, again, I'm hesitant to sort of throw out solutions because I'm not a train traffic engineer, so.
The village, is that what I'm hearing, you said the village is asking us to do this again?
I think the village would partner with us if we, you know, without a traffic study, could we rethink a different way to do the Blythe pickup and drop-off, perhaps? Could a traffic engineer come up with ideas that we haven't fully considered, or would that additional data help us understand that? The Central Hauser area we know is, is challenging.
But the Blythe, sorry, Jeff.
Well, I was going to say, I mean, I, this might, I guess my, I'm not an expert in this, but my sense, I kind of agree with Joel's sentiment, which is that I wouldn't expect, there's only certain things you can do, given the way the streets are laid out and so forth, I mean, to solve a problem like the pickup at Blythe, it would seem like the preschool would just be like, they could stagger the time somehow, like you'll start the preschool at, you know, nine o'clock, the school's at eight thirty or.
That's what the preschool needs to do, does is stagger the time.
In that way, you reduce the flow.
And, the timing of the drop-offs and pickups is specifically noted in this report, it says, you know, there's a 45-minute time period where things are very busy, and unless we change those times, Jeff's absolutely correct, you're not going to change the number of people who come and go to drop off their kids. A lot of the Blythe comments seem like people were just upset that there's more cars around and their driveway is not being appropriately respected, and that's, that's an enforcement issue.
We need, of course.
That is, that is someone out there saying, don't block the driveway.
The ones to stand out there.
Right, I mean, that's.
You'd be hiring a traffic control person.
I know, I know, I'm just teasing.
But yeah, I think it's, I think things could improve a lot if somebody was out there pushing traffic along, I mean, not to use the analogy of O'Hare, but, but I mean.
We don't want to pay 6,800 for a report, though, I mean, that's paying for the person who's out there.
That's why I say we volunteer it.
I gotta believe that Carrie is probably trying to hone in on altering traffic patterns, that's what she wants to get at, you're not going to change volume, you're not going to change, you can affect times on when people arrive, but she's talking about, about a wholesale change in exactly how they arrive to the building.
I understand that.
That's probably what she's thinking.
By Blythe, you can only park on one side of the street a certain way, and that's a whole different discussion when you have the parking restrictions from the village, and that's a whole nother discussion.
Right.
Well, and if the village.
It's not as easy as just reversing it when you have.
It's not, but, but the first step is a, is a new traffic engineering plan, to make suggestions, that's the kind of data that the village is going to look for, that's the kind of data that the village is going to look for.
But the village use the same vendor, again, right, would be, essentially, would we be going back to the same vendor?
Can't we look at theirs?
We would, we would look for qualified proposals, I mean, I think we would ask this vendor also, but there are other vendors out there.
These are, these people who did this work are well-recognized, and they did do the last village report, and the last village report for village-wide work doesn't really make a lot of suggestions in terms of major changes. But is it not the directives that the contractor has given at the beginning, at the outset, right, to say, hey, analyze what's happening here, but we want you to apply new considerations for traffic patterns to alleviate the stress, right? Essentially, that's, that might be, that might be.
I haven't heard that from Carrie.
Right, and I guess this is, this, I mean, my thought, I mean, I know we're partners with the village, but the village should be looking at the whole thing, because I mean, we're not, I mean, granted, we have the schools and there's a lot of traffic around here, but there's traffic downtown businesses and the downtown business areas, are they asking the businesses to go in on this traffic study to try to alleviate congestion? I mean, I guess, when I'm looking at this, if they're, if they're looking at the whole village, let's see what they come back with, the whole village, and that.
Absolutely, I mean, it's probably a worse pain for me when, when, the, the drop-off has its own issues, once you've had the drop-off, coming back around to the train station has its own set of challenges, and oftentimes that is.
Right.
Twilly your thumbs, but it's, it's intricately involved in that, the reason there's a problem there is because of so many people doing that.
And I guess, and my point is that, let's see what the village comes back with and say what their traffic study says, and then based on that, maybe we should then maybe evaluate a traffic study, I don't think.
I like that idea.
I don't think we should be trying to do a traffic study now.
I guess I, I would wonder what new solutions we could come, would be provided by using the same vendor, I understand that we wouldn't necessarily use the same vendor, but if we were to go back to the same vendor, I just, I'm not sure what else they would have different to say. say.
I mean, you got, you got two streets here, the street, the street behind us, you got 600 people coming at one time, there's 400 people coming, you know, 15 minutes later.
We're gonna be busy.
That's a problem. I mean, there's no way, there's, there's no way, magic solution, I don't think, right?
I can't imagine whether it would be.
Maybe what we need is greater understanding from Carrie and committee.
Yeah, and I'm gonna say, it's also, I know part of, you know, both the Blythe kindergarten conversation as well as this conversation, I think speak to this idea that the facility plan has not been sort of, you know, publicly, fully rolled out. And so if, you know, kind of what strikes me in both the conversations is maybe these things need to be just postponed and revisited after, after some of that is more fully understood. I, I could see some value in the, in the traffic study, looking very internally at some drop-off, pickup and our play and parking lot patterns. But again, that's perhaps because I've been sort of privy to some of the, again, just the brainstorming ideas that have come up in the initial facilities, you know, the facilities committee work. So, you know, maybe it's, it's better if we just postpone this, and then if, as that process evolves, and it will, and it's going to, that we come back and revisit this.
Is this, I was gonna say, is this traffic study, is that DLA's area of expertise? They have expertise in that area, or is that?
No, so DLA would essentially subcontract and recommend that you work with the traffic.
They don't have anything to say about this one or the other.
Yeah, that's what she's saying, is this could sort of stand, stand on its own merit, and that there might be value in, in doing it while, you know, while other pieces of the plan are yet, you know, yet to sort of evolve.
You know, but each of these things is, is an expense, and it's easy for their, in a way to say, "Oh, yeah, study this, study that," but they're not paying for it, so, you know.
But in fairness, I think she's probably maybe applying solutions that she's experienced at other districts with other volumes, that she's probably saying, "Hey, I think we should have somebody look at this."
I would.
We, but basically, we need more information before we.
I would entertain looking at it if she provided some very good, well-thought-out commentary on why she thinks it would be truly valuable, rather than I hear, "We can hit some details."
Yeah, she'll do it.
I agree. Any other comments on this? So this is coming back for further consideration after the facilities, maybe you think about a little bit, maybe?
Right.
So, next item, then, if there's no other comments, other comments on this, is the partial network switch replacement at Central and Ames. I don't know if Mr. Tavano has something to share with us on this.
Good evening. Provided some information regarding the architrical replacement of the schools and the packet. Let's give a little background, in 2009, District 96 invested about $1.6 million in technology infrastructure upgrades. In fiscal year 2015, we began the process of replacing and upgrading components from that initial purchase. This continued last year with the wireless network replacement, and we're proposing to complete the network hardware replacement cycle by the end of fiscal year 2019. Now, typical network switch hardware lifecycle is about five to seven years. The equipment we have has exceeded that, and we've gotten a great use out of it, again, given the, the age of it and the condition that it's still in. Now, district has already received E-rate funding approval that will cover 40% of the costs associated with the initial phase of the proposed network switch replacement. We're also, we're currently in the E-rate application process for next fiscal year, and are again seeking that 40% that we're eligible for to cover the, the associated costs with the final phase of the project. Phase one of the project would result in replacement of all the network switches at Ames and Central schools. Phase two of the project would result in replacement of the remaining network switches at the other schools. As an applicant for the federal E-rate program, we have to evaluate and examine all bids received for the eligible services and use the selection criteria guidelines associated with the program. And the program does require that participants select the most cost-effective bid. That being said, it will be the recommendation of, of myself and the tech steering committee at the February Board of Education meeting to proceed with the proposals submitted by Mindsight in the amount after E-rate discounts, after the 40% of $34,864.
And that's, that's the total, over the five years, the total amount?
That's for this phase. That's for Ames and Central.
The first phase.
For the equipment, exactly.
Why would you do this basis?
While the equipment is in relatively good shape still, it's, it's a way to spread out some of our costs over multiple years.
Yeah, I was just curious when I had to tell the answer, yeah.